What did Kay just, what did she say? Kay, do you mind taking a roll call for us, please?
Here.
Here. Here. Here. Thank you, Kay. I know Bob and Deb both will be here and are running a little bit late, but we're going to get started. It's my hope that we would end this meeting by 7:30. I think on the agenda it's at 5:30 to 7:30. And the item that's listed on the agenda is just budget work session. And as a result, I think everyone, there's some packets here on the table that have, I'm sorry, down here, that have information from our council retreat, the last retreat we did, and as well as some travel information and the minutes from the information session that came after the retreat. I've been informed that since, the only item that's on the thing tonight is the budget work session, then that's what we can talk about. I will just allude to the minutes and the stuff from the retreat, that at some point, I mean, look through that, I know we had an information meeting about it. Look through that, and if there's some suggestions on how that should change, or what you want to see in terms of the roles and the value, or the roles and the responsibilities of the mayor and the council, and the vision and mission and goals for the city, then make those recommendations, and then we'll start that conversation at another time. Since we have one item on the agenda, I'm going to try to just frame this item in this discussion so that we could have, hopefully, some meaningful discussion about it. Ever since I've been on the council, the council has talked about trying to get ahead of the budget process to give more direction to the mayor as he puts together his budget and the proposed budget for the council. It would be my hope that that's what we can do tonight, and I mean in big picture terms, to really set some direction for what the council would like to see. I think it's our responsibility to talk about that what, and then it's the mayor's responsibility and role to figure out how to do that. And then as that budget comes back to us, then we do whatever we do with it throughout the budget process. So this is an attempt to just get ahead of that process and talk in big picture terms about what the council would like to see in terms of major efforts done with the budget for 2009. We do have one item that I know a council member brought up that would like to be discussed at this meeting tonight, so I'd like to start it off with talking about that travel issue, and then potentially changing the travel policy, or having some discussion about it. And with that, I'll just open it up for, I'll give it to Sam who wanted this item on the agenda, or wanted to discuss this item, and I recommend that we move it to this February 11th meeting. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Alderman Chapman. The discussion of travel has, there's been a lot of discussion of it over the years, and I think one of the ways to help address the issue would be to, instead of having the travel budget be this, be set up so that, I think it's the travel budget for 2008, I believe it's $50,000, $60,000. And when you compare that to other communities, our amount is much higher than other communities. And I think that that is an issue. And I think one of the ways to address this would be to simply state that it is not necessary to send more than five council members per trip to the National League of Cities trip, and it's not necessary for a council member to go on more than one major trip a year. I think that that's a reasonable compromise, and it's still much more than many other cities do, and that also solves the issue of having a quorum leave town. Thank you.
This item. I'll just add, it said in them that no formal action would be taken tonight, so whatever we decide or we want to do, I mean, we could then send it to Public Works Legal and Finance or wherever, so that they can get into that discussion, and then some formal action can be taken on it. So with that, I'll go to Alderman O'Krepeke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And I certainly appreciate Alderman Quaker's thoughts on travel. And as I've reflected, and I spoke a few times to the media and other folks, is that it seems to me that there's so much going on nowadays to learn and to see that we really need to have more than just a couple people going. And I mean, you look at, you look at some of the perspectives that we have on our council. Now Lloyd likes to deal with the kids, and Karen likes to do the storm water, and, you know, I like economic development, and, you know, we can go down the list on what our priorities are and what our passions are. And the problem is, if you try to go and you just send one or two or three people, you say, "Well, go to these things," and then come back with your, with the findings, it doesn't, it just doesn't make it. I mean, there's no way that I could sit down and listen to, you know, taking care of kids, come back and relay that to Lloyd so that he could move forward with that. It just, it just would not work. And just because you go to those meetings, that's, you know, that's only a small, small fraction of it. You get the real benefit of these conferences when you have a chance to meet and talk with people afterwards. You listen to the lecture, and you go out in the hall, and you have a cup of coffee, and you talk, and then you talk with these people and see how they really do things. It's one thing listening to the one speaker, but if you can talk to several people on how they do things, that brings back some reality and perspectives that you wouldn't necessarily get. And we're a growing community, and we need to be thinking progressively. I mean, we can't be thinking of a community that's of 10,000 or 20,000 anymore. We're pushing 70, and we're growing at a much faster rate than we did five years ago. And with all the things that are going on, we're going to, we are going to grow. And we need to go to these conferences to learn so that we can see how other communities are developing their cities, and to give us a different perspective. If all we do is put our head in the sand here, you know, it's going to be the dog wagging the tail instead of the, or the tail wagging the dog, as opposed to the dog, or the tail wagging the, you know what I'm saying? The point I'm making is, is that we need to be proactive, we need to go to these conferences, we need to go and learn. And the only way you are going to learn is by going to these trips and making these efforts. You know, I know when I go on these, when I go on these trips, it's, my work doesn't stop, and I still have to work after all the, after everything is done during the day. So it's not really a vacation for me to go, it's, it's, it's an effort. It's an extra burden on me to make sure these, when I go on these trips. So I think we should applaud the people that want to go as opposed to hamper them. Because this is for our community, this is bringing back good ideas, and I think we should make as much effort as we can to go. You know, Bob, I'm probably going to steal a little thunder from Bob, but, you know, he went on his first one, and he realized that it was a good deal. You know, we've learned that a long time ago. So I would encourage us, as many people can go as often as they can. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Other comments? Alderman Hurlbuck.
If I could first, I forgot the meeting was 5:30 and not 7:00. Can I get just a thumbnail of what, the issue is limiting council travel in what fashion?
Just talking about the budget today, and I know that this issue was going to come forward, so we just started the discussion, you haven't missed much. Sam introduced the item, basically said what he thought should happen. He would like to see council members go on to one major meeting a year, and no more than five go. So that's kind of what he's just thrown out on the table, and then Alderman O'Krepeke just made his comments.
Okay.
Absolutely, go.
And if I may, I have said several times on this, I see a lot of merit on both sides of the coin. I agree with Alderman O'Krepeke's comments that it is both very valuable to go to these seminars, as I learned firsthand, and it's also very difficult to bring that back and teach it to your other council people. You bring that back in terms of the wisdom you bring to the job that you do, more so than you bring it back in the form of a lecture. And there is a great value to that, that there's no substitute for going to some of these conferences. That said, I wonder if there's a diminishing return that you reach. And there is, given the media attention that this issue garnered, I think there is, we have to be wary of the public's concern that we not be abusing travel, and I don't think anybody is. I just, we have to balance, we have to balance public perception with what we know. You know, you can compare us to Billings, Montana, or Sioux Falls, South Dakota, and maybe they just don't have as aggressive and proactive council people to have been to these seminars to realize how valuable they are. So I don't know that it's a fair comparison to say that by being an aggressive, learning, proactive council, that that's a bad thing. We just have to make sure that we manage the public perception of how we're going about that. So what I would, and I think it's a legitimate concern for people, and I don't think they realize, I didn't. I was, I was critical of these conventions until I went to one myself and saw the value. And as Alderman O'Krepeke said, it isn't even just the classes you attend, it's the people you talk to outside of these courses as well, and exchange information on what people are doing in their city versus yours. And I came back with a wealth of ideas and things that would not have even occurred to me had I not interacted with the people at the conference that I went to. So all that said, what I would suggest is, my understanding is in the budget, we budget for two seminars per year per council person. And I would suggest that that be, that we budget for two, and we allow two. And if any individual, and some council people won't go to two, some may want to go to more. And my suggestion would be that after the second seminar in a given budget year, that council approval simply be obtained for additional travel, which allows for flexibility, and allows for, given Alderman, to explain the value of a particular conference that they want to attend, and obtain the approval of council for that above the two. I would encourage council to go on at least one of the two major ones. There's always the big spring one in DC, and there's always a big fall one. And they are, they're incredibly worthwhile. And between those two, and whatever other individual interests other Alderman people have, I would suggest that two be the allotment per council person, and approval for additional conferences as needed and as warranted. I'll just throw that out.
Thank you, Bob. I'm just going to make a comment. I think that when we were putting together the budget in 2006 for 2007, we did toss around some numbers to say that council members should go, or, you know, we put it in the budget that maybe you could go to all of the conferences, plus the municipal league. But nowhere in our travel policy, and I think that everyone has a copy of our travel policy, nowhere in the travel policy does it say a number that you can go to once. I mean, that would be a change, so I just wanted that to be clear, that right now it's not in there that you can go to two. What's the driver behind this right now, more than anything else, is the dollar amount, in my opinion, the dollar amount that's in the travel budget. And if council members want to access, to go to council, I mean, go to travel, I mean, they can. Right now, it's not designed around a number. So, I mean, that would be a change, either one or two would be a change. That's not currently in the, in the policy. Alderman LaCroy.
Thank you, Malcolm, Chairman, President. I guess my comments on the travel part of it is from day one. From day one, I called it continued education. And that's what it is for me, because, you know, when I graduated from high school, when I started working at 16, I didn't have the opportunity to go to college or anything after that. And so when the NLC came up, you know, I take, I see it as an opportunity for me to learn, and I take it not only for the council, but for my personal life. I've taken the credits that I've received from NLC and turned them in to my employers to show them that all the time that I've missed from work, this is what I've done, this is what I've accomplished. And they've been impressed, you know, because this was the first full year on the council, and I can tell you, I lost $10,000 in wages from the time that I've taken off of work and going to the conferences. But what I've learned at these conferences has been tremendous. I've been able to use them, not only in my personal life, work life, and now we've got a request for a simulation for a poverty workshop. That was one of the things that me and Barb Garcia went to, and that's something I'm going to come speak to on legal finance, and I hope we can order that, and each and every council member can go through that, because it's great learning. We also, you know, I went to a budgeting for outcomes conference also, and through that conference, through the, out the budget, I asked questions that I learned there. And it brought forward the landscape architect for the Parks Department, so, you know, that came forward. But I do see it as a continued education for me, and it's an opportunity for me to learn more, I'm more hands-on. I'm not in disagreement with the amount, you know, when I was first on the, got on the council, that it was explained that, you know, it's budgeted for two for each council member, and each one after that had to be approved through council leadership and the mayor. And so I think it's a good policy. I don't mind it going back through the council if they want to approve it. But, you know, I think, I think every council member has a different need for what they need on the council. Some of them have got degrees and don't feel that this continued education's important, but someone like me, it's very important, because it's probably about the only opportunity I have to take additional classes and credits, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else on this? Karen?
There we go. Since we're in this discussion, I think it would be important also to stress that we not leave out of this discussion the opportunity to participate actively in the South Dakota Municipal League. Those meetings occur more frequently, and I think our participation in those is tremendously important. And I would guess full participation by our council would be very powerful. The South Dakota Municipal League is our best united voice when we have interest in something that has happened legislatively, or something that is happening in terms of skill sets. It gives us an opportunity to meet with other people from around the state, to build a kind of cooperative spirit that has enabled us to successfully approach another important, several important legislative issues, and just to stay on top of the perspective of, in our state legislature particularly, of what is important for our city to have in terms of the tools to make our city better. Just in this, I mean, just yesterday in the paper, there was the notes about the Sidewalk Cafe and the Forward. I mean, those are tremendously important things. And I don't, I think we should continue to value highly participation in those meetings, because those are, that's our South Dakota family, and I think knowing those people better and being able to call them when we need something done legislatively is extremely important. So I would urge, as we calculate a budget, that we really calculate it so that everyone could participate in all of our South Dakota Municipal League meetings. And that would be both the district meetings and then the annual meetings as well. In addition to that, I guess I'm, my sense is with the constituents, they are hesitant about having more than five people gone from the city at any one given time. And while there's clearly a perception of that, because let's face it, I think Malcolm has made the observation that in any given day, I mean, we could by just pure happenstance, not all of us be here, because this is not a full-time job for anyone except the mayor. And they don't say, "Karen Olson, you have to stay in Rapid City every day of the year." Because we all know, we lead business lives and work lives and personal lives. So the possibilities of us in any given week not all being in Rapid City are very, are very strong. So I don't, but I do think the perception is that we should not leave the city gone in total. So I guess I would disagree then with Bob as to going to two conferences a year if it means that everybody's gone for, you know, for two periods of time where everyone is not here. I think that doesn't inspire confidence, and whether it's sensible or not, and I would raise the question of whether it is sensible. But I do think the possibility of a second trip isn't inappropriate, because I would guess that most of us serving in, on committees, or serving in particular interests, where the attendance at an additional conference of one kind or another might be very helpful, not just helpful, but tremendously insightful in bringing, bringing forward a much better sense of what it is that we can do. So while I wouldn't support all of us going to the league to be in attendance at our two annual National League of City meetings, I do realize that the institutes and the other programming that are put forward by the National League of Cities could be an appropriate place for people to participate in a second meeting. But I also think it offers them the opportunity, I mean, one of the things that I've looked at is there's a National Association of Parks and Recreation, and I would consider there could be a time when that might be a very valuable thing for myself as being the liaison to that committee and very interested in parks. And then lastly, I was going to, so I think I don't want everyone to be gone. But my last point would be, the National League of Cities meeting that's going to be here in Rapid City, we should have 100% participation in that. I mean, I think for us to not send our members to that meeting is just not, it doesn't send the right message to our national service organization. And therefore, I think everyone who is on the council should be an active participation, participant at that meeting. And so I would hope that this year's budget allows us to do that. So I would urge the mayor then in creating the budget for travel that it would include the possibility of attending all the municipal league meetings, and it would allow people to attend more, two meetings, but leave us some options as to what those additional meetings are. So that would be my approach. Because I believe that, I think the contacts that you, that you make and the things that you learn, I'm at 100% agreement with Lloyd, are valuable and are very powerful. And in addition, the Washington DC trip, I mean, last year, I mean, the return on that trip was just enormous. It's what, about 18 to one or something like that, when you consider the fiscal value of what was accomplished by being in Washington DC and visiting with our congressional delegation. Thank you.
Karen?
First of all, a question for Finance Officer. When we talk about the travel budget, whose budget are we talking about? Is this simply the travel budget for the council? Or is this the travel budget for the council and mayor?
It would be the mayor and council, because it's travel and training for fiscal year 2008, mayor and council, $60,000.
Okay, that's one thing I suspected, and I want the council to think in terms of that. There's been a lot of criticism, I think, out there regarding council travel, and a lot of discussion regarding council travel. I've never heard anyone say that the mayor shouldn't go anywhere. And maybe the mayor shouldn't go everywhere, but, you know, we focus solely on the council. And that budget does include, in the mayor's perspective, there are some important trips that he goes to DC, there are trips that goes across pier to represent the community. So when you say our travel budget is too large, and then try and tie it solely to the council, I don't think that is, is a fair statement. Maybe at some point, we'll talk about what's appropriate the mayor goes to, I don't know. And today, we're talking about the council. Here's what I, here's what I don't find helpful as a council person. I don't find helpful as a council person when somebody makes statements that the council has frivolous travel, or some catchphrase like that, because I find that absolutely offensive. You know, I would hope that we don't get back into that scenario again, because I could go a long ways on discussion of that. From my general perspective, I think that we've approached the budget in a positive fashion, which essentially does lay out the ability of the entire council to go to the two nationals. Practically, in a practical sense, all council members are not available to go. And we knew that when we set the budget, we knew, we know that for next year, if we have the same approach. Certain council people give differing amount of time, whether it's attending committee meetings in our community. We have council people that might go to one or two meetings a week, we have council people that might go to 20. It's been my findings over the years, and continues to be my findings, that those that travel are those that have a high interest in the community. They also go to more meetings in the community, and they dedicate themselves, I think, in a higher perspective, you know? So those, again, that travel more, spend an awful lot more time here at home, working on city business as well, and I don't think that's recognized. And certainly, if those folks spend more time here at home at committee meetings and feeder meetings and representing the community, they certainly are benefited even to a greater degree by that travel. I do want to say that. I think that at some point, we should talk about whatever the appropriate limit kind of is, as you do go and travel. But I don't find two national conferences a year online. I don't find that all of the local opportunities through the municipal league are bad at all either. I think that all of those should be acceptable as well. And when we continue to talk about travel, again, the finger's also pointed at every council person. And remember, we have a full-time mayor here, and we have 10 council people. I don't believe a $60,000 travel budget is in excess, number one. Number two, a statement's made that we travel more than most councils. I also didn't find that to be true when I talked to a number of people in New Orleans. I made it down there with a mission. I wanted to find out how our council operates differently in terms of technology and in terms of travel. And when Bill talked about the discussions after the meetings, those are some of the questions I asked. And I asked every council person I visit with, what is the size of your council? How many people in here? How do you arrive at, how many people can go on these conferences? And almost all the time, I heard the same thing. First of all, I heard the probably majority of the council people I talked to, they have a council of seven or less. They don't have a council of 10. We have a rather large council. And number one, number two is, they don't limit the travel amongst their council members either. Again, because most people can't go all at the same time. So they kind of let that dictate. And there's also people that have a greater interest, just like our council, and people that have interest for learning or interest in attending these things. So I don't know that, a blanket statement that says that this council travels more than other councils. It might be true of Sioux Falls, but when I read the Sioux Falls paper today, I'm not sure I want to be compared to Sioux Falls either in a number of ways. I don't know if anybody saw that Sioux Falls is the divorce capital of the community, of the nation. So I'm not certain.
Not now, just for a correction.
For a correction, okay.
It's not now that, it used to be.
I read the line. You know, I don't think we can benchmark everything on Sioux Falls. At one, you know, and they did at one time. Matter of fact, they used to send more people than Rapid, you know? Matter of fact, they used to send more people than Rapid, you know? And now their interest level on their council has not been in travel. And I, I did visit with the, somebody from Sioux Falls, you know, and, and he said, nobody wants to go. And I said, well, that's, that's reasonable. But I, I think that statements that, that try and cast, I guess, a negative connotation on another council person shouldn't be made. And I think it, a gentleman's agreement that we ought to treat each, treat each other with dignity and respect in terms of that had oughta come too. I don't think we had that tenor almost two years ago, it's gotten more friendly, at least we've gotten down to, you know, the crux of things. But for a while there, it was, it was pretty bad, and I think it was, it was political, very political, and it, very negative. But I'm, I'm not, I'm not convinced we need to change our, our, our budget. Those are my comments.
Anyone else on this side?
I know we're not being formal tonight, but if we could go to someone else before we come back here a second time.
Ron?
Thank you, Mr. President. I sit here and listen to some of these, I made some notes, so I'm hoping that you guys will allow me a little leeway. I'll try to keep it to the budget. And, uh, because I am still fairly new on the council, I can, um, I, the, the question of travel came up at a meeting about limiting the amount of people that would take a trip. Obviously, I made the motion to table that item, never had an opportunity to, I never explained myself very well in that manner. And what I, what I intend to do is maybe try to put a little light on that, because as a bearers of the budget, I'm not sure that there's a lot of significance there. I think that, uh, we as, uh, elected officials within our city, within our wards, were elected in, by the people in our wards and, and by the city, the people in the city of Rapid City. I think they have confidence in us to make common sense decisions. I don't, I'm, I am not aware of any trip that has left worth more than five people from the council at one point in time. Um, I am not aware of, uh, any comparisons that are legitimate in the amount of money spent in our travel budget versus the amount of anybody else's travel budget. But I can say one thing, from my travels throughout businesses and, and times that I've spent traveling, I have made connections with people, with people from all across the country, from, uh, some that are not even in our country anymore. And I still take those contacts, and I rely on those people to help me through periods of times, uh, times of change, things that are happening in the city that we can relate to, things that have happened in other cities already. We talk about, um, there's, there's things talking about the value of our travel. I think that's considered under a value of, of travel. And I think if there's any issue with our travel policy, it is an uneducated issue. It's, and I say uneducated in the fact that it's uneducated for the citizens when, when they come to me and they've mentioned the travel thing, all they hear is the little snippets in the newspaper. They don't know the connections that our people in our city council have made, they don't know what goes on behind closed doors, they don't know what goes on when we go home at night and I'm calling one of you people on the phone and saying, well, how are we gonna handle this? These are things that are coming down in the, in the future, and I know that you've attended some, uh, meetings in, in other states, say, New Orleans, you've met some, uh, city councilmen from across the country, uh, the, I know it was mentioned, the fellow who, who, uh, blessed his soul and his family that died in the city council meeting in, uh, I think it was Georgia, was actual acquaintance of Mr. Malcolm Chapman, who is our president of our council. I think, uh, trying to limit the amount of people that go to, of the amount of travel on a certain period of time is a moot point. I think it's, it's, it's kind of in a, a manner, almost kind of silly to me, but I'm, I'm not gonna make that comment, but I think it's, uh, we're elected by the people here and they, they trust us, they have a trust in us. Um, I think that we, we automatically limit ourselves, I think Alderman Johnson had, had kind of alluded to that by saying that not everybody can go all the time. Everybody has a different role in, in how they look at and approach what they do on the city council. Some people have limiting factors. I've had very, very many limiting factors this year that has not allowed me to, number one, make a commitment that I had originally meant to make to New Orleans, I was not able to do that for personal and family reasons. Um, I think that, uh, you know, it, it is self-limiting in itself, I think that we have a good council right now, we have good leadership in our council, we have good leadership, and the leadership is what's gonna provide the value when we travel. I think that though, if there is anything mistaken, and I'll repeat it again, is the fact it's uneducation. I think that the people, the citizens, once I begin to talk to them about why we travel, what we're doing, what are the, what are the benefits that we get for the travel, I think they, they, all of a sudden, they changed their mind and go, you know what, we need to travel. I remember when I was a young man, and I was, I was probably nineteen years old, and I worked for a fellow who was, uh, the president of Jewel Corporation, which is an Osco drug chain, and, uh, and I was asking him how he became the president of the company, and he'd said at one time, he was told that he needed to find fixtures for a hundred stores of, of Jewel Osco drug. So what he did, he ran down the street to the nearest, uh, big chain, I think at that time it was Sears, read the, read the, uh, little manufacturer's logo on the side of the fixtures, and I said, know exactly where I'm getting my fixtures from. Streer, street fixtures, that's what we're gonna use. And he stole the idea, or, or didn't try to reinvent the wheel, I didn't wanna use that. But I think that the travel alludes to that too with our city, and the opportunity to not reinvent the wheel every time we face a problem. I think, uh, if we isolate ourselves in our community and stay just within our community, I think that's what you end up with. I think you end up with a closed-minded community. We have a large community here with a large diverse population of people, a lot of people with different thought processes. I think if, uh, if people were here from the Dolphine Arts Centers, if they were here from, uh, the schools and, and, and Ellsworth Air Force Base, they would say, you know what, guys, you gotta get out there and you gotta find out what's, what's going on. So when we look at the budget, I don't think a dollar amount is what we really need to be looking at. I don't think that's the real crux of the, of the issue here. I think that there's been a dollar amount established, and I think it's reasonable. And I think what really needs to be done is an education process to our citizens and tell them why we're going, where we're going, and why do those particular people that we chose to go as a council in its entirety, why are they going? And I, with that, I'll, I'll leave it at that, I think the value is there, I just think that, uh, we need to educate the people so they understand better why we're doing it, where we're going, and who's going. Thanks.
Thank, yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of comments, and first of all, um, you know, I think it was very unfair the way the media compared our travel budget to, to other locations for a couple of different reasons. First of all, the cost of travel. It costs more money to travel from Rapid City to New Orleans or Washington DC than it does, uh, from Sioux Falls, there's no question about that. The second thing is, is in Sioux Falls, they have a commissioner form of government, there's only seven commissioners, not ten. So just for the sake of argument, um, if, say that you allot five thousand dollars per commissioner per year for travel, that's thirty-five thousand. For us, it's, it's fifty thousand dollars, just because of sheer numbers. And that doesn't take into account the cost of travel. Uh, the other thing is, is, and I'm pretty sure about this, when, when they went out and they compared the travel budget, they called him and says, what is your council's travel budget? And I'm gonna go back to what, something that Tom Johnson alluded to, and the fact that, quite honestly, I believe that Sioux Falls separates theirs between the, the commission and the mayor's. So I don't think that was a fair comparison. And so I've always been an advocate for travel. Um, you know, the rationale using, uh, using the formula, we're going to put enough money in so everyone can travel to both events plus municipal league, that's basically been a formula, and it's worked well throughout the years. I would, I would encourage you to stick with that, just because of the fact that, um, it gets us to a number, it's not perfect. But then again, do you wanna, do you want to, a year in advance, almost a year and a half in advance from the end of the fiscal year, try and predict every single trip that every single one of you are gonna make? You can't do that. You know, um, what I would suggest, plug a number in there, and there again, in my mind, it isn't about, it isn't about how much we budget, it's, it, what it, what it comes down to is openness in government, we acknowledge exactly what we're doing, and we also acknowledge what we're getting in return for investment on travel. That's what it's all about. Um, like I say, I, I will tell you, and I'll be, and I'll stand on this statement until I die, media blew this thing way out of proportion. I, I thought it became a media circus, I thought it was ridiculous. Um, it was a slow news week, what can I say, or news month, I should say. And, uh, I just, I, I thought it was very inappropriate what they did with it.
Deb?
I speak loud enough. Um, just a couple of things, I don't wanna attack anybody on this, I just think, um, again, the media did not help this council at all. Um, teamwork, and I'll keep saying this, um, when you decide to do and throw that out to the media and, and say things that you wanna say, I mean, you gotta be careful because the rest of the team, I think you oughta consult with people a little bit and have that conversation on the backside, and then bring out the issues on the front side with the media of, of your true, true feelings. And I, I appreciate Sam and some of that, 'cause, you know, it's what he feels, but there's the other side of it, that part of the team is working together to find those answers and not throw them out there so people think we're doing something wrong, when we're actually doing something very positive for Rapid City and for our jobs as city council people. You take the time out to do these trips, and there are times that you get educated, in Lloyd's case, that was, that was a true statement, Tom's, where you actually meet people and you can communicate and do different things for your city. Um, it's, it's a very positive, it's a time where you can actually relax and focus, 'cause when you're in town, you can't focus. And you, you're taking calls, you're doing your job, you're, you're like mixing and matching everything that you have to do as a city council person. When you go on that trip, you're, you're focusing only on your job as a city council person. And that's a positive for me, 'cause I, I'm all over the place, and everybody knows that, trying to fix things and help people and, and do my job at the same time, it's actually a trip that's very educational, it's very camaraderie, it's, it's just a very positive. So it's sad that people are saying we don't demonstrate things, or we don't have purposes, or that this travel is too many people. I mean, look at the big picture, guys, part of the team is taking care of the team and make sure that team's educated, make sure we're getting the right contacts, and we're getting the things done that we need to get done. And part of that is that education that we are learning, some of it's on teamwork, some of it's, it's on assumption, some of it's, it's just all kinds of things to make us better people. And to fix five people, or six people, or three people is wrong. Guys, if you wanna go get educated, I don't tell my people at my shop, only three of you can go this time, that's all we have in the budget. We figure out in my budget how I help those people to get better, better educated, to make my business better. That's what we're doing for the city council. We are educating people to be better at what they do at their job. And part of that is being the team. The media, it, it, it's a negative how you throw it out there, but it doesn't help when the team adds to that negative, that's what brings a story about. If you have an issue, I will say again, that's a positive to have an issue, but work it out, and there's many things and many ways to find solution without throwing your team out there like we're doing something wrong. 'Cause you know what, we're all hard-working individuals on this team, there isn't one working harder than the other. So that's why sometimes I think it's politically correct to do the things that some people do, because it's the way they throw it out there. It's like you throw them to the wolves and make us look like we're doing something wrong, that's just wrong. If you haven't concerned, that's a positive. If you wanna throw it in there like we're doing something wrong, that's a negative.
Thank you. I, I don't think I disagree with anything that's been said around this entire table, I agree with a lot of the comments, I think there've been a lot of good comments. I do wanna correct one, I, I don't know if I misheard Alderman Olson, uh, Karen? I, I took your comments to say that I was suggesting that all ten council people should go to both annual meetings, and if that was the case, that's not what I was suggesting at all. What I was saying is that the opportunity should be there, it should be a limit rather than a requirement. Uh, but then getting to the, the media, you know, the media's job is not to help us or to hurt us, the media's job is to report the information they gather from what we're doing and, and how we go about the business that we do. Um, and I think that, uh, you know, they can take the information from our meetings and, and present it however, uh, they will, but, but what we can do is try to do a good job of presenting what we do to allow them better information, because the, it's easy to perceive travel excess when in fact, um, i- if we better educate the public, the media can pick up on the information that, oh, we're actually excessively leading and excessively learning and excessively, uh, bettering ourselves for the betterment of our community. And, uh, you know, I don't think as just a general policy matter, it's unreasonable to say that, that we should budget for two, and two should be a, a general limit, but not an absolute limit, and the same with five people attending. And as Alderman Whiffenbach said, it's, it's self-limiting anyway, it'll be rare that more than five ever wanted to go to something. But there's nothing to say that we can't tell the media, look, as a general policy matter, we believe that, that two conferences is appropriate, um, and that five council people going on to a conference is appropriate. And should there be, uh, a valid justification to, to vary from those general policies, um, the council will consider that, and we'll be able to inform the media of why we're doing that, um, on the occasion that that comes up. So my suggestion is, by saying five is a, is a reasonable limit is not to say that we can't exceed five. Uh, it's just to say that we will do a better job of educating the media as to why we're exceeding five if we do. And, uh, it, it is self-limiting, it'll rarely come up, but if it does, uh, there's, there should be no arbitrary number of council people that either is or is not appropriate. It, it all depends on the, the value of the particular seminar and, and, or, or occasion. Uh, and if it's meeting with our congressional delegation, I, I can justify easily all ten of us being there. If it's something else, you know, we, but, but we can do a better job educating the media by dealing with that as it comes up, rather than, and, and tell them, look, we're gonna have a policy that says we're, we're wary of sending more than five, and we'll explain to you why if we, if we go over that, and it, and it looks there, therefore looks more proactive, in my opinion. So that's my suggestion and thoughts.
About, Ron?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had, I, in my rambling, I forgot two points, and, uh, and maybe I'll emphasize a point that I think that is important, um, like I had mentioned earlier, becoming self-limited would also, I think, would, would, would better me and, and to understand prior, you know, we know that some of these conferences, some of these things, ahead of time, if we actually took the opportunity to discuss what would be the best approach to take, which council people would be able to attend them, what would our expectations be from them at the, at the council meeting, how would it fit into their schedules, how would it, um, how would it best suit the city of Rapid City? And the other thing is, I'd also, obviously, of the context of this and the being, bringing it back to the context we're in is the budget, I would be willing to look at opportunities to, in other areas of the budget that would make more sense, to cut those areas, to leave our travel in place. I'm not, I'm not here to say, and, and, and I think that most people that have dealt with me understand that I am concerned, and have concerns about increasing anything in our budget, or even, or looking more so for opportunities to move items where we get more value. And I think travel, if it's done correctly, there is a lot of value, and I think that, so I'm not opposed to, as it stands in the budget, moving the numbers into place that allow us to, to either maintain our current travel budget and, and, and get it from somewhere else, or increase it, whatever we feel necessary as a council to get the most value for the taxpayers in Rapid City. Thanks.
Um, before I go to Tom, I just wanna say, you know, we, we spent almost an hour talking about travel, and, and I'm not opposed to that. I mean, we can talk about the issue for two hours if that's what the council would like to do, because I think we should fully vet this issue, uh, and then at some point, move on from this issue. Whatever the council wants to do to bring some of these things forward that have been identified, uh, if we need to bring them forward and actually have a vote on them and, and that sort of thing. But at some point, uh, I would hope that we could put a book in on, on this discussion, and as a result, I haven't said, you know, we're only gonna talk about this for fifteen minutes and then we're gonna move on. If it takes the full two hours tonight to talk about this issue, then that, that's what we do. Tom?
I hate to correct the chairman, but we spent more than an hour talking on travel. We spent hours and hours and hours talking about travel. In fact, I think we've had at least five votes, I facetiously said fif- fifty-two votes. And one of the problems with the council is if you're not happy with the vote, continue to bring it up, bring it up. I, I think at some point we should close the issue. And the one thing I wanted to point out was, and Bob very eloquently talked about how we visit with the media, just as a little side note, Bob went to media training when he was in New Orleans, and I think that it was very beneficial and very helpful. I've gone to that class as well, and, and just, just from listening to Bob, I will tell you that, that he learned something very valuable. And most of us in our private lives, lives, we don't have media training. And in this job, you're in front of the media a lot, and that's just one of the opportunities that you have. And as a matter of fact, I suggested that Bob even consider that class. But that's a proven example, just from this meeting, of something that Bob brought back and probably sharing with the council here. Thank you, Bob. Thank you. My mic's not on. I think that was set up.
Thank you, Malcolm. I guess I kind of like the policy the way it stands. And from the way I understand it, it's budgeted for each one. Councilmen would go to two a year. And from my understanding from when I first got on is anything under $1,500, you still have to get mayor and council leadership approval. Anything above that goes to council. And I think that's a good policy. I don't think there's anywhere you can go for under $1,500. And if it is, it's well worth the bang. It's a good bang for the buck, I think. But either way, it takes approval from either the council leadership or from the council along the side. The second thing I wanted to say was that when we talk about numbers going, you know, when we got invited to go to the San Antonio for the Youth Education and Families Summit, there were seven of us that went. You know, one council member, community development specialist, Barb Garcia, and five other leaders from the community. You know, school board president, Dr. Ruth, Youth and Family Services Director. But we had the highest turnout there from Rapid City. And the average was four from other communities. So we really showed our colors in San Antonio for that. And it was brought up several times. And so I think we're trying to limit the numbers. Strength is in numbers. And that comes with this council, too. If we can hand together in numbers, it's more strength. So I'm not one for limiting the numbers. I think we're grown men and women. We can work through a time if we have seven or eight or nine that want to go. I think we can sit down and say, you know, Lloyd, you went on 10. Maybe you should stay. I would say, okay, let somebody else go. I think we could work through it. Thank you.
Since you took that media class, did you find that other areas in the country, they try and report the news instead of making it? No, that's a serious question.
No. In fact, what I found was that councilmen nationwide that were at this particular conference were concerned with the media blowing things out of proportion. I don't know that it's any worse here than it is in other places. And that's why it's important to focus. Again, keep in mind, they're an outsider that is simply looking in and saying, are these fat cats abusing travel? We need to show them why we're not abusing it. And, you know, go back to the yellow journalism days of Hearst and what sells newspapers? Controversy. And so it's, we see it everywhere. And that's why they have seminars purely on handling the media, or courses at least at those seminars.
Okay, I'm going to ask a question. I think we need to throw on the table the people that are in disagreement with this travel, what the issues are, why change it, and what is the purpose? Not to do anything, but let's lay it on the table. If this is what we're talking about, we're having all the positive here. I want to hear from the people that have issues with this at this point, because that's why we're here today and this is why we're discussing this. Let's not wait for the media. Let's do it now. Let's throw it on the table and discuss, again, why you need to change your travel and what is the purpose of the change.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, actually, this whole debate sort of started when I brought up some suggestions as far as the travel policy. And one of the things that I know through the mayor's office that we continue to struggle with was a change that was implemented in 2003. And that's where you start talking about per event. And I'm going to tell you, if you want to talk to Kay or Nadine, they will tell you the headaches. I mean, just the sheer nightmares that we have because of that one add, that one addition to the travel policy. Because before, in the six years I was on the council, it was very straightforward. If it was under $500, department heads could sign off on it. If it was between $500 and $1,500, they had to come get the mayor, the mayor's approval. Anything over $1,500 for a trip for a person, it had to go to the city council. Now, the problem is, is we added the language that says "or event," per person or event. Well, the problem you run into is the fact that you have many times where you have multiple people either planning on going, dropping out, people wanting to go. And every time that happens, the mayor's office has to go out and go through a complete new process of putting together another travel request. Because South Dakota Municipal League is a good example. You know, the event might only cost $300 per person or $400 per person, but if you get four or five people going, it's over that limit. Well, you might have Deb say, "Well, I'd like to go now. I hadn't planned on going. Therefore, we need to go back and run a travel request through again." Ron says, "You know what? I'd love to go. I was scheduled to go, but I can't go." All of a sudden, we're reducing it. We need to come back and take him off the travel request. And it's really creating a lot of paperwork nightmares, trying to keep it straight on these events, where the total request might be $1,600, $1,700 for four or five people to go. Because it's close, people are basically dropping off or trying to be added on. And it really is difficult. I mean, if you want to, you might want to ask Kay about it, but I mean, it has created a lot of headaches.
Good question. If you feel like you want to answer that question, then by all means.
Thank you. First of all, going back to the addition of the words "or event," if I remember right, that happened in probably five or six years ago. And that was the unanimous in adding that language to the travel policy. I think that that language is good to keep in. And if there's ways to make the administrative burden less, then that can be looked at. But I think that is good policy to be able to, you know, that has some limiting effect when you have a point where the traveler request then needs to come to the council. I think that that is a good thing to keep in place. You know, going back to the overall issue, Mayor Hanks had brought forward a resolution last fall, and it didn't get much discussion, really any, in legal and finance. And the idea that I brought forward tonight and introduced a couple meetings ago is somewhat similar to that, follows the spirit of that in a sense that, you know, it's basically saying, you know what, let's just use common sense. You know, we don't really need to send more than five people on a National League of Cities trip. And certainly, we don't need to send, you know, 11 to everyone. So, you know, I know that I've learned a lot in the last six years. And one of the things that I've learned is I can count. And I don't think that there are a lot of votes to change the policy. But what I will say as a council member and as a representative of my constituents is I reserve the right to vote no and express concern on travel items when they come up, and will continue to do so. And I think that just because there's a concern over policy doesn't make it political. I think the word political is thrown around loosely, and that isn't fair. I think, once again, my idea is very similar to the mayor's in its spirit and its scope. And I think it's definitely worth considering. Thank you.
I would agree, Sam. And you have the right to question and do that. My concern with your approach has been, you've used the word frivolous, which is reprehensible to me. You and I went on a trip and we spent $15 difference in a trip. And the only difference was, you and I rode in a cab, and I paid for the cab and I turned my receipt in. It was 15 bucks. To have you say frivolous and point fingers at the council affects me personally, and it attacks my integrity. I think that was wrong. When you use hurtful words like that, that's what I object to. I've heard you say fast and loose. I've heard you use a lot of different words to describe what this council travels like. And that's offensive and attacks me personally. It attacks me professionally. And that's the problem I have. I don't have a problem discussing any issue in a professional fashion. But when you start pointing fingers and you start talking about the integrity of people, and I value my integrity, that's when I have the problem. A professional discussion, I've got no problem at all. A policy discussion, I've got no problem at all. But when you attack my integrity and you attack my integrity on TV, and you attack it in the newspaper, and I think sometimes twist your facts to do it for sensationalism, that's wrong. And that's my problem with this whole debate. I don't have a problem talking about travel. I have a problem, again, when you attack my integrity and the integrity of the council, even if I'm not involved. If you attack the council or members of the council, I don't like it. And that goes for anybody else that would make remarks like that. That's the biggest problem I have. And I think that's really where the council's coming from. Those words, you can't pull back in. They hit the newspaper the next day. I guarantee you. If you said 10,000 words during that meeting, those are the words that hit there. And those are the words that hurt. And those are the words that people make judgments by. It's not right. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree in general principle, but I think that some of that is old news. And I would prefer be left as old news. This is not an action item tonight. But I just want to say, and in particular, I think to Deb and Lloyd, by suggesting a general policy limit, I'm not saying we can't send more than that, but let me just use this as a media example. What is the media, let's assume this was an action item tonight. What would the media take from the result of this discussion? Counsel chooses not to limit their own travel. We could instead say, we think as a general policy, and I don't know how this interacts with the headaches staff faces, Mayor Hanks, and I don't want to go there. All I'm talking about is what's the media take from this? Counsel chooses not to limit travel. No. Number one, we limit it by the budget. And number two, I would suggest a general policy that says, we limit it to five unless circumstances warrant. And that doesn't mean that we can't justify more. It just says, you know, yeah, we are going to say that we recognize the public's concern that we justify our travel and that we limit our travel to that which is valuable. So the media can take unlimited travel, or it can take a responsible policy from this discussion. And that's why I brought those things up. And it's not to say that we can't and shouldn't travel more.
I have to agree with Bob on that. The attacks anymore are frivolous. No offense to you, Tom, but it's time to move on. We appreciate that. And I appreciate you taking care of us that way. You've always been good about that. But again, I would like to know the policy changes tonight, because that's what we're doing. We're here for policy and what we need to change on it. Bob's totally right on that. I want to know what the changes need to be and what the suggestions are. Now I know why, which is, thank you, Sam. Now I want to know what. What are the things that you think we need to change or what we need to look at that it's going to make the difference on this policy? Because we have a budget that sets it, but we don't have a policy. So what is the policy? And if you're going to, if we're going to change the policy, that's what we should be talking about tonight. What is the policy changes that we decide is the best policy for travel? And once we do that, if we set the budget at 60, that's part of the policy. If we say five, if we say, I mean, we haven't got anywhere near that. And that's what I'd like to discuss is the policy. That's what this comes down to at tonight. Everybody thinks it's a good, or most everybody thinks it's a good thing. Some of Sam's concerns can be good. There could be a solution here in the making with some of the things that we are talking about tonight. It's just we need to all get together and figure out what that policy needs to be and how we need to change it.
I thought we were talking about budget constraints and dollar amounts and travel policy. I haven't heard anybody mention anything about the amount of money that's being spent in travel policy. So, you know, whether we come down to Alderman Hurlbut's comments about responsible policy, and when this first came up and we tabled the issue, I'm definitely still not having been clear enough to tell you. The reason that I tabled it was for the same simple fact. We can limit everything this council does today, and everything the council does in the future makes no sense. Again, we're elected responsible officials. We have good leadership. We need to exercise our good leadership. We need to exercise our responsibility and restraints on travel. We need to educate our council people on the reasons for travel, what areas will work for them, how they could travel. I think to enact a specific policy that says, okay, children, only five of you can go, ties the hands of the council. It ties the hands of the future council, when all in actuality is if we're looking for some constraints, the only constraints that I could see is the opportunity to educate each other and the opportunity to educate the public on why are we traveling? What have we gotten for it? Whether they call it the bang for the buck, the return on investment, whatever you want to call it. I think there's value there. And I think our only shortfall as a council is not explaining the values to our constituents. As I know, I'm sitting right across from a man I know that has traveled a lot. But I'm telling you, the value that I have received from that travel, from his education, from his sharing of his travel with me, the things that he's done, has been of value to me, to help me become a better council person. And I appreciate that. And I appreciate everybody on the council who has shared their information with me. And I just want to say, and I can't reiterate enough, we're talking about dollars and budgets, which I thought is what this conversation was. I think the policy is in place. I think all we have to do is work the policy better amongst ourselves as elected officials. If people are not happy with this, they have their option to not elect us. And that's what it comes down to. I don't think that my constituents are dissatisfied with anything that I've done or anything that we've done in general as a council, once they know why and what our reasoning was. We are under a microscope like Alderman Hurlbut explained, and that is the media's duty to expose what they think may be. You know, they're going to throw the question out there. That's their job. I'm not blaming anything on them. It's our fault for not educating our constituents on why we are traveling, why we send particular council people to those specific meetings. And I'll leave it at that. And I hope I reiterate that fact enough. I think that if there's a policy to be enacted, the policy should be that when we know National League of Cities is coming up, and we know we're going to have several council people, that maybe we have one of these work sessions to hammer it out and say, what would be the best bang for our buck? Who has the opportunity to attend? Who can bring the most information back to us in a viable fashion that gives our taxpayers the most bang for their travel dollar? Thank you.
Thank you. As far as the, you know, the actual policy, as I suggested on the no more than five per trip, or not going on more than one National League of Cities trip per year, and that can't be acted on tonight because it's not on the agenda. But I think what we can do is we can bring in this back to a budget discussion. Alderman Johnson brought up an important point. And it was a point that I hadn't thought of. And that is, is that when a lot of people are doing the comparison between our city and other cities, it's mayor, we have a mayor-council budget, which is all one cost center and one light item. And other cities apparently have two, one for mayor and one for council. I didn't realize that. And I would bet that most of our constituents don't realize that either. And I'd like to make a suggestion that I And I'd like to make a suggestion that I hope and believe will have broad support on this council and that is to ask the finance office to take a look at what other cities do and let's split that out in the 2009 budget. Let's have the, I can talk about the amounts more later, but let's decide to have the mayor and council have separate budgets. Thank you.
Other comments about travel? Ron?
I guess the one comment I would have is, you know, is actually, this will work itself out. And the reason I say that is I know Tom was on the council and I believe Mayor Hanks was on the council, but probably about eleven years ago or something to that effect, the city policy basically was the mayor, president, vice president, council were the ones that attended these meetings. And during that period of time, some of them come back and said, you know, these meetings are really important for all council members to attend. And that's how we got to where we're at today. And if you look at it historically, you know, over the years since then, is, you know, we might have four, we might have five council members, but you need to look at it in the aspect that is, number one, is whenever any one of us go to one of those, it costs us money to do that. I mean, you either have to take vacation time that you could have had with your family at some point in time, or you hire someone else to take over your work while you're gone, whatever it might be, but it costs you money to do that. And even if you look back here, I'm really good. I only spent twelve bucks last year. So the news media ought to really love me. But the fact of the matter is, is over the years, I've spent a lot of dollars on those travels, going to those conventions. And a lot of those were because I was either president or vice president of the council. But it was also because when these meetings would come up and we'd get the stuff, information in our boxes, I used to check and see how many people were going. And if there was only two or three or whatever it might be, I'd say, well, put me on that list. But if there's four or five, I say, you know, that's plenty. I'm not going to put my name on that list. So anyhow, what's happened over the years is the councils have changed. Right now, we have a bunch of council members that really want to be active and get the information that they believe they need to do their job correctly. And over time and over elections, that'll change and it'll swing again. There'll be people that do not want to take vacation time that they could use their family to go to these trips or whatever it might be. So, you know, will that be two years or three years or five years or ten years? I don't know. But eventually, the pendulum will swing again. And I don't know why we would want to put any, I can't say the correct word, but why we would want to put something into effect that would eliminate that taking place and putting more guidelines on there that I don't think need to be put on. Thank you.
You know, I said we could talk about this issue for two hours and I meant that because once we finish the discussion and whatever action items we bring forward, again, I'd like for that to be the bookends for this discussion. I heard what Sam said about his right to be able to speak out against that and by no means am I trying to stifle that, but in a substantive form, I would hope that we vetted this issue and everybody has said whatever they wanted to say about it. I'm going to make just a couple of comments because, you know, our travel budget last year was fifty thousand dollars. That was mayor and council. We spent forty-one thousand. We didn't spend the entire travel budget. So, you know, we're not spending all the way to the limit of the travel budget. I think Karen made an interesting point and I don't know if the number is accurate, but I get what she was trying to say. She said that the return on the investment from going to Washington was eighteen to one. I don't know what it was actually. It was pretty high. I don't know another department then in the city that has a return on investment like that. So it would seem, even if we got a ten to one investment, return on the dollar for going to travel, it would seem to me that we would be trying to find ways to put more money in the travel budget if we knew that it was going to yield that kind of return. I understand that's not realistic. But, you know, the National League of Cities is coming here in June. People have already started to sign up to come to Rapid City. If we get a hundred people to come to Rapid City based on the numbers that the CBB has put out in terms of that multiplier and all, it will dwarf the money that we put into the travel budget. I'm still personally a little confused in terms of what we're really talking about in terms of this issue. If we're getting that kind of return on our dollar for people going and people being educated, I don't know why we would want to say that it's a bad thing or so many shouldn't go or that sort of thing. My last comment about it is that Bob said something about educate the media. I've gone to the Journal, the Weekly, every television station in this community before we went to New Orleans and said, this is what we're going to do. This is why the people are going. This is what we're going to get out of it. And not a single one of them ran that story. I've gone back to all of them since we came back from New Orleans and said, this is what we did while we were there. Nobody ran that story. I went to the Journal a week ago and I said, again, I invite you, I invite the Weekly, I invite all of you to come to Washington DC with us. They don't bite. I don't want to be a cynic and say that they're not interested in that, but that story about a return on investment and the National League of Cities coming here and seven or eight council members sitting in Senator Johnson's office and Congresswoman Stephanie Hurst at Sandlin's office and then getting money for Public Works and all that sort of stuff, that's just not sexy enough, in my opinion. It just doesn't sell. So I would hope that we would continue to have those discussions with the media and I will continue to have them on a personal basis. My last comment will be this. This story, for whatever reason, blew up in our community last year. I thought it was a senseless story. But I'm pretty proud to live in a community where the biggest story about our city council was a story where six or seven or eight or nine or how many ever council members wanted to go, take their own time, go and get better educated to do what it is that they do on behalf of Rapid City. That was the biggest council story for a month. It wasn't that somebody had stolen something or somebody was playing below the deck. This was the biggest story. I'm pretty proud to live in that community. And if it takes me personally going to every city, every National League of Cities meeting to get that kind of attention about some issue that I think is foolish from the beginning, sign me up. I'm going. I don't know if there's some action items that we want to take from this. I jotted down some of the things that I heard, that Sam said, that Bob said, that Karen said, that Sam came back and said about splitting up the costs. I have all of those written down. I will formulate them into some sort of sheet and maybe have Kay send them out. And before we start just putting these items on an agenda, I'd like for us to at least have some discussion about them via email or some way to say, these are the issues that we should bring forward. And again, once we bring them forward and we vote on them, I hope that we're done with them, regardless of what happens. Tom?
I know my mic's probably not on again. I turned it on just to make me feel good. It is? I can't hear myself. I do think we have a policy or a general policy that says that two conferences and it takes council leadership to buy in to additional, and many times you do bring in. I think that's currently in place. So I think basically the policy-
I've got the travel policy. I don't see, I mean, I know what you're saying about the general-
I think that's the interpretation, but I don't think it's such a part of the-
Yeah, it's not in here anywhere about that.
Okay. I stand corrected?
I will get these reduced to some writing. And again, I'm not trying to cut anyone off about this issue, but if there's more comments, we can keep talking about it. If somebody else has something else they want to say. And I would say this, to add something different or something new to the discussion. Ron?
Thanks. One second. Thank you, Mr. President. I think Alderman, quicker, bring up an important point, that each individual, that these things need to be approved at the council level, on the dais. So everybody has an opportunity at that time to voice their opinion. So when it comes through, it gets approved, they don't think Ron Weifelbach should go to Washington DC. They have opportunity to voice their opinion, tell me why I shouldn't be able to go. So thank you. That's all I have to say.
Okay. I will get these, all these comments reduced and get them out and then we can make some comments about them and then figure out how to bring them forward. At the risk of any other discussion about travel. Then I'd like to open it up, at least for the rest of the time we're here, in terms of big picture, like I started off tonight talking, are there some things that we want to recommend to the mayor in terms of, and I break these things down into the what and the how. Are there some things from a what standpoint we should be doing as a community? And then hopefully having the mayor come back and propose those things in a budget that we can do. Again, this is the first time we've tried to do this to get ahead of the budget process. I hope that as the council moves on in the future, that the council continues to have these kind of work sessions about budget, about a number of things where we can sit down and just have discussion about things and not be up there on the dais doing some of these things. Are there some issues about how we're currently getting the budget as a council? How we refer things back? From a big picture standpoint, some direction that we'd like to give the mayor as he gives directions to department heads in terms of what we'd like to see in the budget for 2009? Yep.
I see the biggest issue was that money that was left over that we take and we're recommended to take, that seemed like the biggest issue, I think, at the end. It was just chaos for me, trying to figure out which one is-
Just talking about the CPI.
Sorry. I'm sorry. The CPI. It just seemed like a fiasco and who was politically correct and which one was the best one to push forward and lobby for. It didn't even seem like it had any sense to it to a certain extent. It did because people have their hearts in a certain place, so it made sense that way. But it didn't make sense in an overall picture. How we do that differently, I would like to see it a little bit different than what we just threw it out there and picked which ones we thought were going to be good for either our ward or our constituent or our passion for what we like. So how we do that differently, I don't know. I would like to look into that a little bit more, but I don't know how we would do it different. Malcolm?
Just a comment about that. I mean, the mayor chose to bring the budget forward without the CPI included in it. And he clearly stated that, I mean, that's up to the council. If you want to add that in, however you want to do that, I mean, that's up to you. This is the budget that I'm proposing to you. I said time and time and time and time again that that wasn't the only money that the council had to look at. That was three hundred and thirty-one thousand or three hundred some odd thousand dollars. And I said it time and time again, that that money sits over here on the side and the council can choose to put it in or not. I know our finance office says, no, we're crazy not to put that money in the budget. I understand those reasons too. But I think, you know, and this was part of what we were trying to do at that retreat, the role of the council, part of the role of the council is to deliberate over that budget that the mayor brings forward. Just because the mayor brought something forward doesn't mean that that's the budget that we have to pass. If we want to go inside and tear up that budget, then we could have done that. We sat around this table and we could have done that. I know there was a lot of talk about economic development. There was some discussion about pay increases for the council and technology increases and all those sorts. RTS drivers and libraries over at General Beetle. Somehow we attached all of those things to that CPI money, which was not the case. Which was not the case. So I wrote down, and again, that will, you know, we can tell the mayor that, that will be his call in terms of how he brings that forward. But then the council, the council has a responsibility to do what it thinks it needs to do as well. Sam?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of things I would like to mention relating the overall budget process. First of all, I think it would be appropriate either at this meeting or a future budget preparation meeting to have a summary of the revenues from 2007.
Can I, if I could just interject for just a second. Jim and Pauline and I met last week and, I mean, those numbers just aren't ready yet. I mean, those numbers, we don't have those numbers yet. I mean, I wasn't omitting that from tonight's discussion. We just don't have the numbers from 2007 to be able to say, these are the numbers and this is where we are. So, I mean, it wasn't that we were just leaving that out. I mean, it's just not ready yet. But I hear what you're saying.
And I guess I would like to ask that we consider convening another meeting as soon as that information's available because based on what we know our results are for last year, that's going to give rise to the whole direction for the 2009 budget. And speaking more globally, I, you know, and I've said this often, will continue to say this, and I'm sure that Deb and others will join me in this, and that is, is that I'd like to continue to see a renewed focus on streets and infrastructure. And I would also like to see the cost of tax increment financing districts and the benefits delineated in the budget books that we get. List of the districts and the property tax dollars that instead of going into general city coffers or going into tax increment financing districts, I'd like to see if there's a way to delineate that in the budget and put that spreadsheet right in the budget books. Those are just a couple of the ideas that I have. I also believe in identifying, I've said this before, continue to say this, identifying operation and maintenance costs in our, you know, anything that we build out of an enterprise fund or a capital improvements or particularly 2012, which is where, in my view, it's been the biggest issue. We need to identify those O and M costs in the budget. And part of the way we can do that is when we have the periodic 2012 updates that come to the council, that there be an estimate. And I realize that a lot of this is a guess when it comes to determining what the O and M costs might be. But I'm going to use the example of the Roosevelt Swimming Pool, which I'm not going to knock because it's a great facility. But I'm going to, I will point out that when the original discussions occurred before the Roosevelt Swimming Facility, there was really no discussion given to the at least four hundred thousand dollar impact that it would later have on the general fund budget. Certainly not, I'm certainly not saying tear it down. What I'm saying is, is that we need to have those discussions on how much those buildings cost. And it's not fair to, it is not fair to future councils for us to, or any of our previous councils, to be building infrastructure without giving some forethought to what that, in buildings, without giving some thought as to what that will ultimately cost. And so those are some of the thoughts that I have. But once again, I think it would be great if we could convene another meeting as soon as we have, you know, relatively final sales tax numbers available.
I'll say this again, this is just a start. I mean, I, you know, it's not perfect. It's not everything that we want it to be. But I hope that in the future, the council continues to do something like this and almost that we, on an annual basis, schedule for work sessions like this throughout the, just quarterly work sessions. So I think we're probably up against a time crunch right now because the mayor, I mean, is probably getting ready to have those discussions with department heads if he hasn't already started. But, you know, that, you know, maybe we need to be having this meeting in December, you know. So, I mean, let's help each other think through this in terms of how to make the process better. Again, it's not perfect. It's not right. It's just a start. We'll go to Bill and then we'll go to Lloyd.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, Sam has brought forward a lot of good ideas that I certainly agree with. You know, we talked about we need more money for infrastructure. And I'm going to challenge the mayor to do just that. Question is, where are we going to come up with the money? Where are we going to, how are we going to come up with that? You know, maybe we need to take a look at some of our subsidies that we do. Do you know, without taking the BBB and what we give, the four million dollars to the civic center, we have our subsidies for swimming pool, the swimming pool, as Sam said, was it's nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars. The journey is three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The economic development is two hundred and twenty-five. And what kind of bang for the buck are we getting from there? And I'm going to challenge all of us to be thinking about this. And Malcolm talked about the economic development. What kind of bang for the buck are we getting from that? It's something that we need to talk about as policy. Where we, if we're going to say, Mr. Mayor, please, I challenge you to increase the amount of money that we spend for infrastructure, he's going to come back and say, well, where are we going to get it from? And maybe there are different areas that we can look at- And maybe there are different areas that we can look at to help support the challenge that we're giving them. I'm asking all of you to take a look at what we spent on subsidies. And is this something that we want to continue to do? We're looking at doing other things with our 2012 monies. And that's going to be, that's going to require additional annual monies as well. And is that something that we want to do? Is this where we want to go? I know there's, and I'm going to pick on a couple of points, that, you know, we had someone that was hired, that was, that got themselves a job because of a grant. And now the grant went away. And the city brought her, brought the person back on and now we're paying, now we're paying for that, knowing full well that they should have gotten their grant. And I, to be honest with you, I have a problem with that. Just because, you know, it was good work. They had, you know, they did what they were supposed to. The grant ran out. You know, you should have gotten another grant. I mean, I was, I was hired on as a, I was an executive director for a grant in Bismarck. And I knew that if I didn't get another grant, I was going to be out of a job. And I expected that. And so I think we need to look at some of those things. And I'm going to toss this out to all of us and just see where it goes. If this is something that we want to do. I've kind of kicked this around with a couple of us. And Mayor, you may have a problem with that. And if you do, that's, you know, let us know. But is there an opportunity for one of the city council members to kind of keep a closer tabs on, not tabs, that's a bad word, to keep a better or closer idea of what you're doing? I mean, because here's what's happening. Here's what's happening. You know, here's what happens. You do a great, I mean, you did a great job last year putting a budget together. I mean, you just came on board and now you had to put the budget together and then you scrambled and you learned and you did good. The problem is, is that now all of a sudden, all this stuff has been done. We get it in July. We have two or three weeks at the most to do any kind of deliberation. And all we really do is talk about that $300,000 that's kind of left over as crumbs when we really had to deal with $127 million. So I'm not suggesting that we, that... It seems like it would be more fair to us if we had a better idea of what's happening along the way, rather than getting it right at the end, scrambling like we have, and then we really never have an opportunity, as what Malcolm was talking about, to dig into what the budget was. Because it really was put together and we really didn't have an opportunity to dissect it and to make changes. I mean, I didn't want to make changes to it. I mean, you did it. And so maybe, you know, think about it, toss it around, and is this something that we want to ask the mayor and the staff to be part of? Thank you.
Mr. President, Lloyd and then Bob, I guess we probably should...
Well, first of all, if it helps the process, we could certainly move forward the timetable and get the budget to you sooner. I would tell you, I would have very great concerns about having one council person be part of putting that budget together. And the reason for that is, part of the process is, the mayor's responsibility is to provide you with a proposed mayor's budget and then have the council as a collective group look at that and make decisions. I would be a little bit uncomfortable with just one person having more ability to influence a budget than the council as a whole. That would concern me. If we need to move the timeline forward so you have more opportunity to tear into the budget, I have no problem with doing that. But like I say, having just one council person and I would be concerned because then I think you're giving one person on this council a lot more ability to influence the budget process than the rest. And I would be uncomfortable doing that. I'd feel more comfortable is if you need more time to tear the budget apart, that's fine. We're happy to accommodate you. But, you know, putting that one person in, that I'm thinking of my time in peer, when the governor puts his budget together, that's sort of like asking a legislator, one legislator to be part of the budget team. And what, if you think about that, that gives that one person an awful lot of influence as far as what the proposed budget is. And quite honestly, a lot of times the proposed budget has a lot of, it's, it has a lot more influence bringing it in if it's included in the budget than trying to amend the budget once it's presented. So I'd have a little concern doing that. I, that probably wasn't the most elegant way to explain it, but like I say, I'd feel more comfortable collectively as a group that you'd look at it and make recommendations versus having one.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think one of the biggest things I learned of our last budget was we got a hell of a legal team for $68 an hour.
You get more, too. You get cheaper now, yeah.
But, you know, we've got 12 departments, Mayor?
Eleven.
Eleven departments. And it's, and we've got 10 council members and the mayor, and it's pretty tough to go over every department. And, you know, one of the questions that I was asking during our budget process was performance budgeting strategies. You know, I guess I'd like to see department heads come, when it comes to budget time, come to us with their goals for their department. So that way we know. Because I don't know every department fully and completely, and there's no way I'm going to with that many. So I'd like them to come to us with their goals for their department. I'd like to see the steps that they can take to achieve those goals, you know? And I'd like to see a way to measure that, a way to measure the success of that. And that would be my prime, primary goal for each department head, for them to come to us. And that way, by the next year, we can say, when it comes up, we can say, how many of those goals did you make? We have a way to measure that to where we can go back to our constituents and say, hey, these department heads, they wanted this, they've accomplished this. This here's a long-term goal. It's a five-year plan, but they're going to, they're slowly achieving that. And so that's a way to measure that. I guess to me, that's what I like to see at budget time. And I think we did a really good job this last one. We had a lot of lobbying going on, but I mean, as far as the questions and what we received, I think it went well. And I don't know what you guys think of that type of solution for our budget, but I think that's something we were, the direction we were going to, something to give our department heads and the mayor what we could ask. And that's something I'd really like to see. Thanks.
Thank you. I just have a particular item that I think may be a concern coming forward. The council shooting in St. Louis, Missouri, for those of you who didn't read the story, was more than just, there were two council people killed, the mayor shot, two police officers shot and killed. Head of Public Works shot and killed. City Attorney throwing chairs to keep from getting shot himself while other people were diving under chairs. It was just a horrific incident that the shooter, who is a disgruntled person who always came to city council meetings with gripes, and we have those. I think there is a concern for, does a panic button suffice? And I don't want to get into a substantive discussion as to what security measures may be needed, but what I would like to see is an analysis of what metal detectors might take and whether those can be included in the budget. Because I think city hall in general, not just for council meetings, but this city hall, anybody can walk in and it's wide open and there may or may not be somebody at the desk and they may or may not be paying any attention. And I think it's a valid concern. I don't know how far we want to go with it. As far as the meetings themselves, I think we may want to look at having an additional officer. If somebody bursts through that door and takes out the police chief, he's now got the only gun in the room and the response time from a panic button is not going to be quick enough. My suggestion would be just have a non-duty officer come by and be stationed here rather than on patrol that night. I don't think criminals will wait for the first and third Monday at 7:00 to commit their crimes or notice that there's one less officer on duty. So I don't know that we have to increase the budget. I think we may need to, but I think that's an issue that needs to be looked into.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of things, Malcolm and I and Bill Krepke and the chief actually had some conversations about this this morning. Couple of things that are unique about city hall. There's no law that says you can't carry a gun in city hall. You can carry, you walk in, you can actually bring your gun to city hall and there's nothing we can do. So as far as...
Does it conceal weapons?
Doesn't, we'll put it this way. You can walk in if, say that you don't have a concealed weapons permit, as long as it's not hidden. If it's on your belt and you have a holster, you can walk in. There's nothing we can do about it. That's under state statute. So putting in metal detectors, we'll find out if they have guns, but the problem is, is then we say, okay, go on in because we can't stop you. So that's a concern. State statute's that way. I mean, it's absolutely incredible. It's something we need to address, the state statute. We've had, since there's no meteorologist mentioned it, we've already directed the...
We're directing a meeting on that.
Yeah. One of the things that we talked about was also providing a uniformed police officer in the room. Yeah. Uniformed police officer in the room. And we, that will be done immediately.
Well, we're going to make comments if we need to go further.
Yeah.
Because we attach to the internet.
Yep. And then the last thing is the fact that you talked about additional FTEs. The chief did say that, you know, if we are going to have an ongoing presence as far as security in the building, he will need to come back and ask for additional FTEs if you want something permanent in the building. So trying to bring that all back into the budget discussion.
If you don't mind, I'll just bring it back to some of the more overall budgeting concepts which I think need to be explored. I think getting the budget sooner is a great idea. I think also in all fairness to Mayor Hanks, this year will be really his first real budget. And he, and I think it's okay to say this, he inherited the one last year and this will be an opportunity. You know, as I've often said, here in the council chambers and elsewhere, is that the city's budget is kind of like an old farmhouse and it's been added on, added on to too many times. And I just hope that there's a commitment this year to lift up some sheet rock and see what's underneath and take a real close look from the administrative perspective, which I believe the mayor brings to the table, to look inside the, look inside the budget. And I think also that providing the city council with periodic financial reports, monthly would be great. Quarterly, you know, would be acceptable, but, you know, periodic and frequent financial reports to the council would be, would be good. There's a concept talked about in public administration called zero-based budgeting, and it's really a theoretical concept because in practicality, you know, it doesn't really work to tear down and completely start over. You can't just start from scratch because you have fixed costs, but you can get part of the way there by, at least challenging to some extent, some of the premises for budget increases and looking at past budget increases to determine if additional increases are necessary. And it's a concept, performance-based budgeting, which is definitely worth considering. You know, taking a look, for example, when we get, when we get the budget for the swimming pool, for example, I would like to see at the top, and it was left out of last year's, it was on a different page, but previous budgets actually had the number of FTEs at the top. I'd like to see that on individual pages again. But also in the pages for the budget to just talk about the revenue and the number of, you know, the number of customers or the number of, you know, people that you serve. And you can do that for the swimming pools and the golf courses and, you know, and that, and those types of enterprise units. I think those are some things that can be done to provide additional information to the council to aid the budget, the budget discussions. I'd like to briefly address the issue of security. I, you know, I too, you know, you know what, we're, I'm the only Quaker, I think, in all of West River. I'm very easy to find. And, thanks, Deb. But, you know, and I, and last week was hard for me because I remember in, I remember in 2005, in Charlotte, sitting next to a number of council members from East St. Louis and Kirkwood. And I, it's unbelievable to think that that actually happened. And I think that putting metal detectors in is not, is really not the way to go. And one of the things that I really enjoy about going to peer is the ability to walk onto the floor and talk with my legislators without having to go through a bench of metal detectors. I understand the reason that the Pennington County Courthouse, you know, has a security because of the courtrooms and the proceedings that they have, but I would be very against that. What I do think though, is that there are additional reasonable measures that can be, that can be, that can be taken. And the bottom line is, is I think that we need to remain accessible and, yeah, there's risks, you know? And my six-year-old hasn't wanted me to go to any more council meetings. I think maybe her ulterior motive is she wants to go swimming instead, but she, you know, it's hard when something like that happens. And I have talked to folks, you know, who, you know, I think maybe we need to look at the location, I'm going to, I think I'm going to table part of this discussion and I think maybe it's probably more appropriate for a later time. But I think it is appropriate for a review. And, but I would just, the idea of metal detectors, I would hope that we would find ways to maintain our accessibility, you know, and increase security without, you know, limiting accessibility. Thank you.
Actually, I think Lloyd brought up some good points about department heads for performance and goals and measures of success. I think that is a positive. I think should have been done a long time ago. I think a lot of times when you look at the budget, it can be confusing on some senses and others. I'd like to base it on how much money is spent in that department and how much they've actually used that cash flow successfully in getting the things they've got done. I mean, that makes a big part of any time we give anybody money if they're not really doing anything or, or I shouldn't say not doing anything, but based on what they've actually done before is why we'd give more. So I think that was a really good thing, Lloyd, that you said. And then Bill, some of his comments were very good. And Sam's about the budget sooner and Bill, actually, you're the one that brought that up. I think it's good. For TIFs and grants and different things, do we see those in the budget of which department gets what? And sometimes I think that's important on how they use those as well, of how those TIFs are being used and where that money's going sometimes. Because we're using money from Point 1.6, we're using money from different departments or different funding sources and we're not seeing where those go and where they end up at. And I think that's important when we're doing the budget for, like, old infrastructure. Sometimes we think we might not be getting as much as we are and we're putting $6 million in that TIF money on some of that old infrastructure. So sometimes we don't get all the information on that. So we don't really know where, how many parks we've done with TIFs or grants or different things, so what, Malcolm?
Wrap it up.
Anyway, so I think, I think we need to break it down a little bit more. Thanks, Malcolm. Wrap it up. If I have to wrap it up, you have to wrap it up. Anyway, long story short, I think we just need some of that broke down. It shows performance, it sees, it shows me if we're going to give two more FTEs, tell me why, because if you haven't used the first ones or haven't done anything with the first money, I wouldn't base it on giving you some more when you haven't performed again. So I wrapped it up. Are we having less juvenile crime? Are we having families who are having fewer, you know, calls from police because they are having disputes? And I, I think it would be really helpful to try to measure some of the successes that we have, which really is what I think Lloyd was shooting at, excuse me, in the, in the context of this conversation, I withdraw that. But that's the goal, I think, and I would, I would hope that, that our department heads could try to measure that in some way because those intangibles are not intangible. If you have less kids out on the street, you're doing a lot of good things. Thank you.
When we had these meetings before, we talked about coming up with ideas and challenging the mayor and the finance office and the staff to accomplish the goals that we've laid out. I don't see that we've laid out any goals. I'm gonna ask for a couple of things. One is, and we're talking about old infrastructure, our new infrastructure becomes old very quickly because it is not installed correctly. We don't have it, do not have checks and balances. We do not have inspectors. My challenge to you, Mayor, and staff is how do we put more inspectors on the ground? How do we fund that? Bring forward ideas on how to do that. And I would hope that the council shares that interest as well. Again, you can worry about old infrastructure, but if everything you put in the ground doesn't have its life expectancy, it's all old the day it gets installed. So that's number one. Number two is, and we're having a fair amount of discussion regarding annexation, and right now we have a annexation schedule that probably goes well out at least into three years in short-term goals because of staffing. My challenge to the mayor and the staff is how do we accomplish our annexation goals, which are crucial to the growth and continued growth and, and smart growth of our community? How do we get the staff to get that done? Mayor, I'd, I'd like you and the staff to, to bring me a roadmap and tell me how we're gonna get there in your number crunching. My third item is, and I know we're gonna have a 2012 meeting coming up here very shortly, and I think our 2012 is somehow intertwined with our budget more than, or less than it should be. I'm gonna bring forward some ideas if we ever have that. And Sam brought up some of the operation and maintenances issues. I have some suggestions there. Certainly, we talked about infrastructure, whether new or old, and 2012 is a, is a funding mechanism there. And I think it can be a funding mechanism for operation and maintenance, too. And I'll bring those ideas forward. I won't expand on them tonight. So I think it's crucial that we have a 2012 meeting and I hope that the council has responded to Kay's email and President Chapman's request. Number four is I think we need to have an annual review of our enterprise funds, with regards to funding and with regards to goals. We'll meet the goals that our funding allows. The question is, are we meeting our goals or are we meeting our funding? And I, I think that's, that's a crucial step. We have a lot of complaints about old infrastructure, but there's a reason why it's old. We don't have the funds to take care of them. So we need to determine our goals and we need to have performance budgeting and, and performance, I guess. So I, I think that's, that's important. And I don't, not sure who asked for it, but maybe it was Alderman-Lacroix, but I would actually like to have a separate narrative from each one of the 11 departments, is that what we determined? A narrative that tells, that tells me what their goals are, what goals, what needs are not being unmet and what their long-term needs are, not in the budget book, but something that I can take with three holes in it and put it in an area that I can review and take a look at it. It tells me not only what they think they should have this year, but what they think they should have in five years, in 10 years. That gives me a better look at what we have. And I don't put it away with a three or four-inch notebook. But those are the things that, Mayor, that I would like to see you at least take a look at and see if you can find a way to fund, making certain that our new infrastructure is installed correctly. And number two, that we can meet our goals of annexation. And there are reasons why we want to get some of the annexations done, and I'm not gonna go into those, but that's the challenge that I would have to you, hopefully, Mayor, finance officer, that gives you some idea of what I am looking at this year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Wrap this up very quickly. I'm looking at the clock, too. First of all, you know, these are all great ideas. There's a couple of things, I'm not exactly sure how we do it within the budget and, you know, one of the suggestions was to, to include something in the, in the budget that talks about the impact that TIFs have. I'm not sure exactly how we do that. We'll, I'll sit down with, with the finance officer, but quite honestly, I'm not, I don't know how to get there. You know, the other question was, was, you know, new infrastructure, old infrastructure. Keep in mind, that's exactly what we do through the, through capital improvements and, and our fiber plans. It's, I mean, that's how we identify those. Be happy to try and make sure that we, we touch on those more in the budget, but quite honestly, that isn't so much typically coming from my budget as what you guys do through the CIP. So, you know, I'll certainly see what we can do as far as identifying more, more money, but a lot of the infrastructure, it's, it's a direct result of the revenue that's derived from an enterprise fund. So, you know, that's a challenge. Where do you go out and, you know, and with an enterprise fund? That's real simple. And let me ask the basic question. If indeed that we are interested in getting additional money in for old infrastructure, what guidance would you give me as far as looking at rates? Because that's how you derive additional money to pay for old infrastructure, is through the rate structure. So I, I'm not asking for a, for an answer tonight, but I mean, the, the direction needs to be, okay, you know, do you want me to give you scenarios? If indeed we look at the rates and we have the ability to increase the rates, this is how much additional revenue we'd have to spend the next year, be glad to do that for you. But, you know, but if that's the direction you're asking me to do, please give me that direction. I wasn't sure, I wasn't very clear exactly what you're asking me to do on that, so.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm glad we're having this conversation tonight because going through my first budget now is overwhelmed with a lot of those items and I think that, I think Alderman-Johnson's pretty much summarized a lot of things that I think that everybody said and, and a point. And I think that if our department heads will, have gone through, over my understanding, Congress studies or whatever they call it for wage increases, so we could obviously get some of the best people that we had available, I think we need to lean on them a little bit and, and have them come up with these ideas for the mayor to help him find out what, what our needs are for old infrastructure, obviously. Some of the things with the new infrastructure and the inspections and there's a lot of talk about oversizing costs that I don't think anybody here has a handle on yet. And yet we, we budget money for these oversizing costs that seem to make projects happen. And I'm like, I'm, I'm at, I'm at a loss for that money that we spent on those types of things. In all due respect, Mayor, when they, when we're talking about old infrastructure or even the, say, enterprise funds, I think that there may be some opportunity in some of these funds to, to look for opportunity to synergize some things and, and ways to save money. And when I, I remember going through that budget and we had the opportunity to tear it apart, I'm not gonna deny that, but, you know, it was a new budget for a lot of us. I think our finance officer brought most of the reality to us and we didn't even act on very little or none of it. When he, when he pointed out reality to us on, on some items, I'm not gonna reiterate those facts, but I think that if those were resurrected, we need to look at those items. I think Alderman-Krepke talked about subsidies. That's one of the things that I had real stomach acid over when we, when we talked about things that were put in place and they were to be gone and in two or three years. And all of a sudden, guess what? We added another shingle to the old farmhouse. I think those are opportunities there, so.
He's got the farmhouse.
He does have the farmhouse, but I think it, it sums up my feelings on that budget sometimes and I think the goals and, and the opportunity for our department heads to look for ways to save money, and even down to the ground, to the people that are working on, on the street. I think my, all my experience in business tells me that when I need to save money, I go to those people that are doing the work and say, what do we need to do? How do we need to resolve this? And then we need to put, put it on our department heads, who we know are some of the best people that we could hire in the industry because we made sure that we sent their pay levels to that, to that category where they are some of the best people in the industry. So we need to lean on them, just like our constituents lean on us to be responsible fiscally. I think that we need to look back again at some of the things the finance officer brought and I think that Alderman-Johnson and, and everybody who spoke tonight has some good items here and I think the main thing is to set some goals, look for some synergy opportunities and then move forward. Thanks.
He wants me to wrap it up because I'm gonna beat on him a little bit. On old infrastructure, I think we find ways of how to do new infrastructure. So if we're going to do that, we need to look at how we do new infrastructure. If we're gonna put 40-60 rules or 60-40 rules on old fit infrastructure, there needs to be something restructured in new development when we're doing oversizing and different things that are impacting old infrastructure. So I think there can be kind of something done a little bit different in that department, which doesn't always have to do rates. I know other people talk about impact fees and different things. I know people that come into this, boy, that mayor loves that, that come into the state and they're like, wow, there isn't any impact fee. We, for new development, we don't pay anything extra. Well, in other states, they do. So what you do today with your new development does impact the old infrastructure, does impact the people around there. So they find innovative ways without having to raise rates that, I'm not picking on new development. I think just like anything, you need to do something that if they're doing oversizing and we're going to keep skipping out, and this is the council's fault as well. If you keep skipping out that far and you have to make these enterprise funds drain by oversizing and having to put lift stations and reservoir, it's our own fault. So then when we come back to old infrastructure, we don't have any money. There's a point where, this is the same question that we always talk about, you gotta say, no. We can't afford it. We need to take care of what we have now and if people wanna go out to a certain extent and cannot pay for it, we have to say, no. And our budget can't take it in some cases. Take care of what we have to do now. I'd like to see from the Public Works or Growth Management, what other priorities that do we have before, if we have to skip out into this area, what other priorities do we have? What goals do we have to take care of already that we need to take care of? So when we drain our enterprise fund, we know beforehand, if we do this, we aren't gonna have any money in the budget to take care of that. So then when we come back for CIP projects, those might even be changing. Those five-year goals, guys, might be different now because I'm telling you, because of water pressure, fire flows and sewer issues, guys, you, you might wanna look into that CIP because it might be a little bit different on reconstruction projects and things we need to do. So the five-year plan, I don't think we've taken a look at it, we've just kinda kept it and kept adding to it. We need to know the goals from the Public Works and the Street Department and the different areas. Are those plans still the ones we need? Because of new development and things that we have done, it might not be the same priority. So it does, it does make a difference what those CIP projects and the Point 1.6 and all the different ones that are impacting these, what it comes down to where the really, what is the goal of the council?
Assuming the budget talk stuff is done, I have kind of a separate, just an FYI informational item for when this discussion's over.
I'll try to wrap it up there. I mean, I think this is good.
I think that informally, we can kinda roll up, we can kinda roll up our sleeves and, I mean, and have discussion. And, I mean, civil discussion where we agree and we disagree, but, I mean, at least trying to move some dialogue down the line. Because we couldn't talk about goals tonight and some of the things that we did at the retreat, but, I mean, on that, we, we set some goals at that retreat. I mean, they're on that list and everyone has a copy of that. I mean, take a look at that and let's start a separate conversation about that. I mean, the roles, the responsibility, the vision, the mission and the goals. I mean, all of those things are in there. So it would be my hope is we continue to have this discussion about budgets and other things that in the future, we start to tie these budgetary issues around those goals. I mean, and then that's the way that I think they manifest themselves into the future. I said that I would reduce that first discussion, that travel discussion to something in writing and get it to the council and, I mean, before we individually rush to put something on an agenda, I mean, give me an opportunity to get that out. Let's have some more discussion about it. Let's kinda distill that budget discussion down and, and then put a bookend on it. I mean, and, and let's be done with that. I think the mayor was taking notes in terms of the things that we were challenging, the mayor's office, that we'd like to see in the budget, and I also took those notes and I will reduce that to writing and get it to him and we can mesh notes to make sure that he's got all of that stuff and, you know, his budget's gonna reflect every single thing that we challenged him with. I'm sure it will. So, but no, I, I think this is a good start, that we should have these sorts of discussions, not, not just about the budget, but about a number of issues on a quarterly basis. And, I mean, you know, we said two hours, you know, we'll be here two and a half hours, but, I mean, I think it's two and a half hours well spent. We'll get this information down and let's continue to have these sorts of discussions informally and I think they will help us a lot once we get back up there on the dais. Any other questions or comments about the budget stuff that we talked about tonight? Except for Deb. Bill?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Do we need to, do we need to go through this one more time so that we can, we can share some, some, some of the challenges and goals that we wanna see the mayor and his staff go forward as, as they're progressing along with the, with the budget? I mean, how long, when are you starting on this, Alan?
Jim, what's, you have the timeline. I mean, we're getting pretty close to, but.
Well, we, the mayor wanted to break him on the revenue and where we're at then here. We hope to have that by the end because we're, and then we'll have that as well, we provide the mayor for rest, if that's what.
Well, the point I'm making is, is that, you know, the idea that, you know, Malcolm and I kicked this around for the, for the last year on, on having us get together and try to give, try to help you with some policy ideas on where we wanna go as a city council. I mean, give you some guidance beforehand rather than trying to get it afterwards. And so if, if that's what our intention is, if this is what we wanna do and where we wanna go, do we wanna have another one of these before you really roll your sleeves up and start working? Or, or do you have, or as a collective group, have we given the mayor enough policy to move forward? And that's the question I'm, I'm throwing out to everybody.
of hours and case in something-
And Kay sent something out about the annual 2012 meeting. I mean, we're looking at that sometime in March, probably in the eve, I can't remember what time of day, but we're looking at that meeting. So, I mean, if we can't, I mean, overload right now, but I mean, I do think it's important that we get back together. But if we can still influence that, that process prior to, the mayor says, within 45 to 60 days, I would say that let's distill these things and, and try to come back at them again with just some, I mean, maybe clearer direction based on some of these goals that we've set as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna mention to the council that with regard to the new laptops that we're getting, I've been working with staff. And, and let me just give background that I have actually built two computers in the past from parts and assembled them entirely myself to optimize them. And I've gone through the specs, I've worked with Jim Cook and Gene Hawkinson in how we can optimize these for what council needs are. I've spoken to several of you about this. I'm working on narrowing it from four choices down to hopefully just one or maybe two, depending on what individual needs remain. Most of you are gonna be happy with, to my understanding, something that's well optimized and works well. And, and there are certain things that I'm not optimizing to save money and we're, you know, staying within budget. But just wanted to let you know I'm working on that. If you have concerns as to, what's that? And with the Gateway people, to spec these out, to really optimize some of the... One of the things that kills me is opening an Adobe, a 30-page Adobe file and it just, to scroll down, it goes scroll, 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 and it's so slow. And so I'm trying to optimize some of those functions. I can talk individually with you on those. The screens, by the way, are now going to the widescreen format. So this same 15-inch screen in a widescreen is gonna be about that tall and wider such that it's almost looks like a smaller screen to you. So that's another thing I'm looking at, is getting bright monitors that can be seen outdoors if we take them on sites, that, that are still gonna be sufficient for us, blah, blah, blah. So those of you who have concerns, please talk to me and I'll be bringing a recommendation forward.
Thank you, Bob. And I think we can choose either of those computers. So not everyone will have the same computer, I believe, unless we narrow it down to one. No, we've got budget, I mean, we've got, it's in the budget, so. I think we're done. I, I mean, I see folks leaving. But if you wanna stick around and talk about computers, we can.